You ready? We're all ready? I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bogota Board of Education for Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. Please stand for the flag. Good evening, everyone. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice to this of this meeting to be published by having the date time in place thereof, posted in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record filed with the clerk of the Borough of Bogota and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Erfan?
Mr. Alcalde absent. Mr. Alvarez absent. Mr. Alvarez?
Present.
Mr. Chavez?
Present.
Mrs. Cruz?
Present.
Mr. Navarro?
Present.
Mrs. Olivo?
Present.
Mrs. Ruckett?
Present.
Mr. Miranda?
Present.
We have to call.
Also, I'm sorry, for the record, Mrs. Alcalde had an emergency on the legal matters and Mrs. Alvarez was out for educational purposes. Also, President Superintendent Damian Kennedy, Board Attorney Thomas Coben, School Business Administrator Board Secretary Erfan Efsel, Assistant Board Secretary Elizabeth Ruiz, and no student representative tonight. I like motion to open the floor to citizens on agenda items only. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez for a motion. Do we have a second?
Alvarez?
Mr. Alvarez for a second. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If there's any member who would like to address to address us on agenda items only, I'm still getting used to, is it the name or the address or none?
No address.
No, no, just your name. Please state your name. You have five minutes. Any member like to come up? Do we have anyone in the public? I mean, online? All right. I'm gonna take a motion to close citizens' comments on agenda items only. Do I have a motion?
Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Do I have a second?
Chavez.
Mr. Chavez, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're moving on to section three, one of the Agenda Superintendent's Report. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Good evening. First, I am pulling Agenda Item eight point twenty-two. I want to meet with the Finance Committee before we vote on this, but we will address this again in May. So again, eight point twenty-two, just to do our due diligence before voting. Last night was our coelementary concert, and it was a huge success, even though we moved it earlier to April, hoping to beat the heat. The one day of the year that it was over eighty degrees, it hit us. Like literally, today is fifty. But shout out to all Bogotians. There was not a lot of complaining. It was hot. The gym was packed. Families had a great time. The kids were great. And at the end of the day, it was really great to see all our third, fourth, fifth graders in district in one building performing for our parents and families and communities. So, great job by everyone. I am looking forward to watching that event in a new air-conditioned high school auditorium one day. So, that will be, yes, you'll, I think we'll appreciate a little bit more in the future. A reminder that Thursday night is our open house at the high school. This will be from five to seven PM. This is open to any families in the district or any community member that like to come out and see the high school. A lot of people do not know a lot of the great things that go on in our high school. So we want to give our current seventh grade and families a chance to get an up-close look, but also anyone in the community or elementary school, come on out. It should be a great night. Now I'm going to present the budget. What I'm going to ask if anyone has a chair there, if you would like just to sit in front of the podium, so you can have a clear view of the screen, it'll make it a lot easier. And I'll set up.
We hope you enjoy the budget. Presenter's screen. I just want to get to the presenter. Hold that one second. All right, there we go. So I guess we gotta add a line item to the budget for improvement. I gotta put my notes up. Now I got it. All right, now we're good. All right.
All right, good evening. This is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget presentation. Tonight is April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I am Mr. Kennedy. Erfan Efsel is our Business Administrator. Board President is Mr. Frank Miranda. Vice President is B.C. Ruckett. Trustees Adrian Alcatarde, Idali Alvarez, Robert Alvarez, Jose Chavez, Susan Cruz, Marco Navarro, and Trino Olivo, with Mr. Miranda, Mrs. Ruckett, Mr. Alvarez, and Mr. Chavez serving on the Finance Committee. So on behalf of the school district, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Board of Education and the community for your support in passing of the March twenty-three referendum. Your vote in favor of these important projects demonstrates a shared commitment to enhancing our schools and ensuring high-quality education for our students. We are excited about the upcoming renovations and upgrades, which will not only improve our facilities, but also create a more conducive learning environment for our students. Your trust and investment in our schools are truly appreciated, and we look forward to seeing these projects come to life for the benefit of our entire community. So each year we have budget drivers. What helps us create a budget? And these also include staffing needs, curriculum requirements, capital maintenance, capital improvements, salaries and benefits, special education costs, student IEPs and legal mandates, unfunded mandates, and security. Maintaining our school system, our district is committed to enhancing intervention services through RTI. Using data data from universal screeners and diagnostic assessments, teachers can refer students for additional support. We employ three main universal screeners, math reading and mental health. Reading proficiency by third grade is emphasized for its impact on lifelong success, with interventions and strong instruction crucial for all students. Likewise, mastering math concepts early is a key, as struggles in early grades can lead to long-term difficulties, particularly in algebra. Every student wellness and discipline are also prioritized, with mental health support provided by counselors, social workers, school psychologists, including interim support from our FDU graduate students. Each school in the district has an interdisciplinary team led by the principal to implement response to interventions, also known as RTI. These teams meet after each benchmark screening to analyze data, determine eligibility, recommend recommend follow-up assessments and suggest interventions. Monthly meetings review progress monitoring, with some students needing more frequent monitoring. Interventions are tailored to students conducted by classroom or intervention teachers. The principal holds a final meeting at the end of the year to review the program. Funding for intervention services comes from ARP and Title I, with Title I-A supporting future RTI services. A lot of these programs that we put in place these last couple of years was used with our COVID money that we got, that would support students. Because we're seeing success with these programs, it became a priority to district to now fold them into our general budget. Investing in our our schools and our projects. So the district is integrating a secondary, full, diverse, load-balanced internet circuit to enhance internet access and has implemented a multi-layered cybersecurity approach. So that's the IT terms that those two guys back there know exactly what I'm talking about. But at the end of the day, the district is adding backup internet connections to make sure the internet stays strong, even if one fails. We are also using several layers of protection to keep our computers and data safe from cyber attacks. Our technology department consists of two-point-five technology specialists and a tech director who supports four schools and the BOE offices. They use IT Pro TV for continuous training and provide comprehensive support through an online ticketing system. Capital projects for twenty-four, twenty-five includes include replacing the main entrance hallway floor at Lillian M. Steen Elementary School, replacing a hot water heater at Eroy Bixby and installing security vestibules in all school buildings. The district will also continue to replace old smartboards in schools annually and also maintain our Chromebook one-to-one initiative. Building professionalism, the district designs professional development to address a range of needs, including learning gaps in reading, writing, and math, as well as specific program implementations. PD is provided for new staff and to deepen teacher knowledge and specific content areas of skill. The district faces its PD planning on research evidence-based programs and strategies, regularly reviewing academic research to ensure effectiveness of the PD. Key areas of the focus for professional development include reading, writing, math, mental health interventions, social-emotionally learning, multi-language scaffolds and support, and next-generation science standards. Planning for the future, we will continue to lease from St. Joseph's to house our middle school students, and we're always looking for new opportunities where we could house more students. We're working with professionals to put the referendum into action. Bathroom upgrades at Bixby and High School have been awarded with construction beginning this summer. CTE building bid has been awarded. Construction has already started with the asbestos abatement. We have a meeting next week with those professionals to get that off the ground. Fields are out to bid this summer. They will be working on them, hopefully in May, early June. We are next up in our referendum is planning for the Bixby Gym, the High School Auditorium, the High School Media Center, and electrical upgrades. We're looking to create revenue in district. Our eighteen-to-twenty-one-year-old program, we've had a bunch of districts come out and see it. It's been a huge success this year. We have a district already coming on Monday. Would like to send us a student next year. Also, our CTE program might be a source of revenue in the future. We're going to continue expanding technology capabilities and resources, our safety measures, our one-to-one Chromebook initiative, and ensuring equity and inclusivity throughout the district for all students. ELA and math show an overall improvement, but special education and grade seven through nine math students are plateauing. A concern of these grades lead to Algebra I. Changes include adjusting math instruction length and adding a math lab for eighth-grade differentiation. Focus is shifting to a proactive identification and tutoring for grades eight and nine. Science SJSLA scores are challenging. We are shifting to the next-generation science standard framework with teacher training and open science ed for middle school. To improve graduation rate and reduce chronic absenteeism, our district has implemented several evidence-based interventions. These include the Check and Connect mentoring program at the high school level. We are seeing right now when our adults work more closely with our students who are struggling and meet with them weekly, students that were on the verge of dropping out and failing out of school are making honor roll. They are getting to school every day. So we want to continue improving that. We will look to expand that using Title IV funding. Another intervention is the attendance nudge, which has improved school-wide attendance. The district piloted this nudge at the elementary level with success and plans to continue it in all schools next year. Additionally, the district provides expanded summer instruction after-school tutoring using ARP funds, with plans to transfer to Title I after ARP funding ends. These interventions aim to support struggling students across all grade levels. So this is another thing that we did. In the past, we've used Title I money to help pay for the Title I teachers, really doing us a disservice because at the end of the day, it only paid for the teachers. After we saw what we were doing with the art money from COVID, offering free summer school, free tutoring after school, we now afforded those Title I teachers into our general budget again, and now we can use all our Title I funding to support students who really need it. So the budget itself, comparison from last year to this year, the local tax levy will remain the same. So that means there will be a zero tax increase for this budget. What really helped us this year is that we were one of the districts. You see a lot of districts complaining about losing funding. Bogota has always been underfunded for many years. The last couple of years, we've gotten probably close to ten million dollars.
As a ribbon?
Yeah.
I can see our budget increased ten million dollars for the last five years.
So in the last five years, our 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 state aid has increased increased by ten million dollars. We could do a lot with ten million dollars. So this year's operating budget will be thirty-three million, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. We will have another three-point-four million in grants. This is our preschool grants and some other grants that we receive, which we will go over at the end of this. But this is our total revenue sources for for all aspects of the money in district. Pie chart, talking about that state aid makes up forty-seven percent of our budget with local tax levy being about forty-one percent. Board appropriation. So there's only a couple of big changes. One of those big changes you'll see at the eighty-two percent, that is the RTI, that's the RTI basis basic skills teachers that we folded back into our general budget. The other thing that was a big riser was our our extraordinary aid for our powers that are added district students. That's all IEP-based, and we have to, that's mandated by IEPs. If an added district student is required in aid or any type of nurse busing, we have to, that's where you're seeing that major jump there. For the most part, though, we did a good job of keeping everything the same. Another pie chart is breaking down the appropriations. Instruction twenty-five percent, special education eighteen percent, tuition nine percent. So our budget summary. Salary increases three-point-two-two percent for the BEA, for the administrators, for central office, and for our maintenance and custodial workers. The board has done a tremendous job of making our our salary guide competitive. We are not losing many teachers because of salary, which is a great thing. A lot of districts are not fully staffed, even at this time. We have been fully staffed all year. We added new positions and we kept them because that's coming out of the art money and COVID money. But again, these were all very important to us, and we want to do our best to keep them. Those three BSI teachers. We asked, we also added a new fourth-grade teacher at STEAM because enrollment continues to rise. A new high school vice principal. A student assistance coordinator, SAC supervisor. This is a person that deals with a little mental health, but also any students with substance abuses. We also added a supervisor of vocational education and special projects overseeing the CTE program so that we get that up and running. Projected benefits increases thirteen-point-five percent over this year's cost. We will continue to implement the district's one-to-one Chromebook initiative and also fifteen percent replenishment, also ten new Mac computers for videography class. District-wide educational software, two gigabytes of dedicated internet with one gigabyte backup for all buildings, cybersecurity and data backup. Curriculum writing and development, new ELA and math standards. Our extended after-school tutoring, summer program tutoring. New textbooks. Mental health programs, school-based mental health grant. Class three officers for each building for school days and events. We will continue the middle school lease and our ESIP project. And we already talked about the capital projects with the upcoming school year, but I did forget to mention the COPS grant that we got, which is going to improve our lockdown system, more cameras, more two-way radios, more door replacement. So the referendum tax. So we had two questions. Question one, which we said would be a zero percent tax increase because we were coming off the books of our last referendum. Question two was going to be about a fifteen-dollar tax increase per month for the average assessed home. The referendum tax. So what we were able to do as a district, we were able to put the referendum money into a New Jersey ARM, which provides local governments in New Jersey with investment management services for capital reserve, capital reserve and general operating funds. The board voted in June of twenty twenty-three to invest the referendum capital in New Jersey ARM. That investment has generated close to one million dollars for this year. Those gains can only be used and spent with specific guidelines according to law. But as a thank you, one of the things we can do is we can help use that to offset referendum costs. So as a thank you to the community for passing the referendum, we are going to pay the first installment of the referendum tax for the community with these New Jersey ARM gains. So this will be truly a zero percent tax increase. So thank you.
Say it again. Okay, say it one more time. This will be.
So a taxpayer who owns a home in Bogota for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year will pay zero more dollars per year for their taxes for the school.
Thank you, sir.
So something that we have to talk about that we don't talk about enough, our district accomplishments for the past year. As we celebrate another successful year in our district, we want to take a moment to recognize the invaluable support of our Board of Education, led by Board President Frank Miranda and Vice President B.C. Ruckett. The board's dedication and commitment to our students, staff, and community have been instrumental in our accomplishments. Let's look at some of these accomplishments this year. As a community, we'll be offering free summer meals for all Bogota children. We have offered virtual parent workshops. We had a Bixby playground opening. We have just celebrated five years of free, free, free K schooling for Bogota students. We started a re-registration process to make sure that everyone that wants to come to Bogota lives in Bogota. I do take it as a compliment when we do find people here that they beg to stay. They beg to stay sometimes. We had a great, great community forum recently that we will be using to help for our next big grant that we hope we'll be pushing out very soon. We have open houses in the high school and the middle school coming up. High school this week, middle school in May. Education and programs are school-based mental health grant. We are, we are working with FDU, and we are now getting free school psychologists in our buildings through a special grant with FDU. We installed the Bixby playground. We started our own eighteen-to-twenty-one-year-old program, truly successful. Many districts have come to see see it, and they are talking to us about taking their students in the future. The new offices in the step building and the pre-K offices that is attached to that eighteen-to-twenty-one-year-old program. A new student assistance counselor. Hydroponic gardens. We are producing our own food and giving it to the cafeteria, and we are selling it to our students. We have strawberries going now. We've done great. We've done grape tomatoes, a lot of lettuce. We have a lot of lettuce. But the students are working on it, and they're enjoying it, and they're learning about it, and it's all great stuff. Like we said, the FDU, we have an FDU STEM program. We have students graduating from classes there, computing and security enrichment outreach outreach program. Technical enrichment and outreach program. We had a bunch of high school students do that on Saturdays for free. Bergen Academy's engineering partnership with our middle school students. They're going to the STEM lab over in Bergen Tech a couple of times a month. Our middle school students. Check and connect mentors. We recently started with our multi-language learners where we have teachers who are reaching out to parents and helping them assimilate into Bogota to make sure they understand that everything that they need and help them understand what they are going through, because our 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 students are here and we get to be with them every day. They're learning as they go, but the parents are also learning as they go. Each year we have four or five students graduate with their associate's degree from Bergen Community College. Those credits are much cheaper at the time they do it here, and they do carry over to colleges, saving a ton of money. We have internship program each year, law offices, hospitals. I think last year we had someone in Gottenheimer's office. All right, and that's just to name a few. Students come in, they put what they want. We do our best to help them find that. Projects, referendum planning, we already talked about. Navigated fields with the borough. Bixby and High School bathrooms bid awarded. Construction begins this summer. Fields out to Big. Construction begins this summer. CTE project started. Phase two planning now, which we talked about earlier. STEAM repointing last year. Bixby floor replacement. Vape detectors installed in every high school and middle school. This year's grants alone, we got the COPS grant awarded for almost five-hundred thousand dollars for district-wide security improvements. High-impact tutoring grant for our third and fourth grade students, seventy-six thousand dollars. The hydroponic grant, five thousand dollars. The healthy meals incentive grant, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The school-based mental health grant, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-hundred thousand dollars. The electric school buses delivered and will be out very shortly. That's just this year. That's from July to now, the grants that were awarded to us. Awards and accomplishment, Bogota School District awarded for outstanding financial reporting for six years in a row because of our BA. The referendum money, making money. Zero tax impact four out of the last five years. And we successfully negotiated contracts with administrators and board office with no one complaining. So I think at the end of the day, we we have a lot going on, and we look forward to the future. We are confident that with the support of our Board of Education. that with the support of our Board of Education, we will continue to achieve great things for our students and community. So when we say these accomplishments, this is, this, these are not my accomplishments. This is our Bogota administration team. This is our board. We all have to work together to make these things happen. If I'm rowing one way and the board's rowing another way and the, the administrators are not rowing at all, we're not going anywhere. So it's been, it's been really great and I, and I hear it from other uh superintendents that they know all the good things that we've been doing and that we are really getting a lot done. So I, I continue to look forward to the progress that we make. And again, when, wh- wh- we sit down and write these things, me and Mr. Chang sometimes, we're like, wow, I didn't remember that we did that. And then we're like, wow. And then Erfon even came to me, he goes, oh, you forgot to add this. And we're like, oh, okay. So again, it's really a team effort. It's, 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 it's a lot of people working together, all our administration team, all the board office, our board secretaries, everyone does a great job. So again, I think it's a congratulations to the district and a thank you to the community uh for trusting in us to, to push this referendum along. And we haven't seen a lot of, but in the next six to nine months, you're gonna see a lot of stuff. So we're excited for the future. Is there any questions? We will open it to the, to public.
We have to open up these statements afterwards. We do have to open it to the public. Um, if you have any questions. I'll just for purposes of continuity, do you have a motion to open up to the public on the budget?
Motion.
It's a hearing of the public.
Motion.
So motion.
Alvarez.
Any discussion, all in favor?
I, I.
Any opposed?
No.
Any member of the public, uh state your name. Feel free, absolutely.
Please.
Um, Crystal Konzer, um, one eighty-four West Park Place, right next to the field. First of all, I just want to say thank you. Um, my son's a runner, so I really appreciate you guys passing the middle school track because he loves it. And, and you know, he's do, he's um did the cross-country and, and fall, but there was no middle school track and um we got our first meet this Thursday. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, you know, because it's a long year when you have a kid that just loves to run. So thank you for passing that. Um, and since I live right next to the field, I know you said the, it's gonna start in summer. But I was just curious, so once they actually start, do we have like a timeline? Is it, is it gonna take a year for that to be completed or is it gonna be like four months? I'm just curious to know because, you know, you know, having a runner, that's gonna be the best thing, you know?
So um we're out to bid right now, so when a bid is finally awarded, we will have true timelines. Our hope is September, October. I mean, wha- what we've been watching, though, things change, but we will have a true timeline. Uh, but definitely for track season next year, I imagine there will be a field.
Yeah, so cross-country might be iffy, but definitely probably by uh spring.
To be exact, there's two things we're waiting on. The bid is out now. Just to give you an idea, uh, the for transparency, the bid came over our dis- uh, I guess wishful thinking or desire. So we went back, uh, hence why all of this is working. Uh, we did some value engineering with our architects to pull out things that we can do directly that would be very cost uh efficient in comparison to the bid tied up together. So uh between that and then the DEP permit, which we recently, about a month ago, got, it's submitted, it's good. We just have to make sure now that whoever sees it, however many people see it. So we've always said ninety days after its submission.
Okay.
So we have to wait on both of those things, so.
I mean, I know it's a big project, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're banking on July, June, July. And they said it would take about uh October, that's what I'm, October, but you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, contru- construction is.
But I mean, it'll be done like for next school year. That's what I'm saying. So we're not, we're not looking, I mean, I know it's like a lot, so. But I know things take time, but thank you so much and thanks again for the, for the track. I appreciate it.
I'm Carpenter.
Welcome.
Uh, you can hear me right? Uh, first of all, to go after that beautiful presentation, it's hard. That was an awesome presentation, um, Mr. Kennedy, and great job uh you guys have done. There, you've got a lot to be, a lot of, a lot of stuff done. Um, going on that send that um was just before me. Football's good, I'm a football freak. Football's gonna be ready, right? The field's gonna be ready for football? Do we have Plan B?
Yes, sir, there will be, there is a Plan B that we already started discussing, so we're looking into that. Again, I think once the bid's awarded, we will have a true indication. We're looking at how we can manipulate the schedule, maybe to get more home games at the tail end of the season. So as soon as we get that bid in and we have that first meeting and DEP approval, we'll, we'll know exactly how long it is because the football field is the priority. The baseball field can, can wait, so that's where we want all our eggs.
Well, did you try with county? The county has that field and power plant. There was a, I think it was Leon did something like that for a while.
Yeah, they, they play there now.
They did. Okay, very cool. Thank you. Um, so just a couple of questions for the record. Um, so how many students do we have now?
A little over thirteen, huh?
A little over thirteen hundred?
Thirteen hundred? And nowadays, um, how much do we pay per student nowadays?
For tuition? For, huh? Our, our tuition rate with this budget, like, uh, like around nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand. I remember when I saw it there, it was like twelve. So it's gone up quite a bit. So it's twelve thousand for students right now, about eight, nine.
Nineteen, it's like nineteen.
Um, the budget's calculus is per degrees and the, per the programs. I'm just giving you the average.
Average, right.
Yeah, in the advertised budget, uh, you can see all those details, actually.
Cool, very good, thanks. Um, and my la- my last question is, because I know this was a big thing when I was here and I think that we've had, probably have a lot more. The number of the percentage of special needs students that are out of, going out of district, because that's where your budget is choking, I'm sure. So how much percentage, and again, this is all just for the record, but how much percentage or numbers do you have for out of, you know, district students for special needs? Would you say?
You, do you want to hear about the enrollment out of district?
Yes, it, yeah.
The budget percentage.
Mm-hmm.
It's right here.
That's, that's.
Out of district or special?
So we have, we have about, I want to say just about forty students out of district. Uh, we have kept a lot of programs in district. We created a new eighteen-to-twenty-one-year-old program, a new middle school autism program where we have students, our lower LLDs and our upper LLDs. So we have brought quite a bit uh programs back that we have been bringing students back. With our wellness center, we were able to bring more students back because we had that um mental health piece also helping. So we have made it a priority to only send districts out that we truly cannot house in district because of uh extreme conditions, if that's what's best for that student.
Sure. All right. Thank you, I can help, I'm sorry. Do you have one?
It's also, it's, it's, Mr. Kennedy said, uh, we have twenty students sending to the other district, fourteen at least private school placements. And we have also uh Bergen Academy's tech, those vocational schools, around fourteen, so more than forty, it's, we are sending out.
And, and those fourteen that are going to the vocational schools, are they at the same?
No, they, they, hack and sack to turbo and the promise location.
So at that, at the same rate of nineteen thousand?
Oh, no, that.
A lot more.
The, uh, those academies actually around ten thousand.
Only ten thousand?
The special ed programs are the expensive ones. With the transportation, we can say around eighty thousand dollar each kids. And some, some programs are more expensive, like almost a hundred thousand dollar.
Right, and they, and they can go to even past eighteen, right?
Yeah.
Most of them.
I think it's about two and a half million dollars, give or take.
At, at.
One, especially means.
Out of your thirty-three, then you're running out there?
So, but, but so, oh, oh. Last time. But I think just give or take, you know, there are lots of special instructors, there's special app, it's somewhere in that range.
Yeah.
Two and a half million is.
Okay. Well, thank you again, students, you are, great job.
Three points on your whole, all, all, all questions. So it's a seven percent, otherwise just ten percent.
Seven percent?
Very. No. This is all the, just. Yeah, so all, not just special needs, all of it, three, four, five, six, seven, six and a half.
Good evening, Lisa Cole. Um, first of all, I want to commend every one of you. This is absolutely outstanding, outstanding. From when I left, it was, it was great, we were getting improvements, but over the past few years, what you guys, guys have all done is, it's breathtaking just to watch this and you've taken care of every little aspect between the students, the teachers, um, the buildings and grounds, the learning, it, it's just simply, I'm really impressed. Um, I want to thank the board. I want to thank Mr. Kennedy. Um, Lizzie, big part, you helped too, but the big part, Erfon.
Yes.
Money man.
When we hired you, I knew we hired a gem and let me tell you, you are amazing, amazing. Everything is listed, you, you have everything to the dollar and that's commendable. Um, I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Chang um to get over a million dollars in grants in a year. You don't see that, you don't see that at all. So again, I commend him. You guys doing your little IT. You seem secure. Hopefully we could follow what you're doing. And again, zero tax increase. I will report that on Thursday and I kind of wish more people would sign on.
I know.
But it's a little upsetting that people do not realize how much is being done in school and how much is available. So if there's any way we could try to get this out to the public more, I think we should. I'm sure you're gonna do a newsletter or whatever, but everybody needs to see what's going on and what, what has been added and the grants. Tax, tax, no taxes. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Susan Harper.
Susan Harper?
Can you hear me?
Susan?
Yep, can you hear me?
You have your hand risen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, first of all, I echo what Lisa said. Congratulations on all the accomplishments. It's uh, it's great to see such progress. It's great to see the teamwork and it's great to see how everything um has been moving along. I know how hard you all work and we appreciate it on behalf of the community and on behalf of the parents and the students. Um, I do want to make a comment just concerning the recreational, you know, fields. Um, while I appreciate the fact that there's no tax implication, everything is not just only about taxes, okay, and only about money, as you all know, just by your own accomplishments. Um, even though there's zero tax impact, there will be impact in other ways. There's going to be greater amounts of pollution. Uh, there's going to be li- likely a greater impact to individuals' health that's around the park. Um, I know that some individuals have talked about family members having asthma. Um, and with the um increase in the roads, the trucks, the hack and sack area, um, the cement factory. Um, part of the reason why I always speak up about these large canopy trees is because the fact that they protect people. Um, and they protect, um, and they also, you know, just help in terms of enhancing um our, our community as well. I know that uh Mr. Miranda had talked about value adjustment architekt. Um, and um I think that if anything, they should be taking into consideration on how to conserve some of these larger trees as much as possible in your plans. I think it's really, it's a shame and it sends a very bad message to the students to um, to potentially cut down every single large tree. And um, and I don't feel that the community knows that in full. And while I, I again, I applaud you for all your tremendous work and effort. I think that that's something that's really important for a park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harper. Anyone else? We have two questions.
Carmel.
Carmel Bernie? Carmel?
Hi, yeah.
Hi.
Hi, um, just on the re-registration, I was just wondering what percentage of people responding to that um and how that is going and.
Uh, not, not enough. So right now, I think this morning, we had close to five hundred people uh register, so we're sending out reminders. Robo calls will be going out, so, you know, I think we're, we're making it pretty clear. If they're not re-registered by a certain time, they will be receiving transfer cards. So we've sent, we've sent um certified mail, emails, reminder emails, reminder phone calls, videos. Um, I think it's just important for everyone to do their best to get out there and do it. If they have any questions or problems, they can contact Bella in central office. But I, I just think it's a matter of time before, I think our due date is in May.
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth. So again, I've been in Bogota fifteen years. Usually people wait till the last minute to, to respond to school things. We ask them to buy tickets, they show up at the door. So we're, we're, we're gonna keep pushing at five hundred. It's not a bad number right now. We can push to seven hundred by the end of next week. And we're more than halfway there, so we're gonna keep pushing. That's all we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's just a, a, a question online about teacher aides. We will be meeting with teacher aides um in the next month to review uh what teacher aides uh will be seeing in the future, so that's where we're at with teacher aides, but that, that has been spoken about and we will be meeting with them because that's through a contract with a uh third party. So moving forward for the record, if you ask uh the question anonymously, it isn't fair to residents of Bogota to state their name. And then you want to ask a question anonymously, anonymously, as a president of the board, I'm gonna reject those questions. It just isn't fair. It isn't, it's just not even common practice. Anyone else?
No. Motion to close.
Alvarez. Mr. Alvarez, second.
Oliver.
Ms. Oliver, all in, any discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, so before we move on, Kennedy, you're good?
Good.
You need more water?
I'm done.
That was one amazing budget presentation. Uh, we promoted the budget presentation. Uh, we tried to get as many people, I, I, you know, I figured that when the referendum was happening or when things, people want to, you know, complain, they come in droves. But when there's good news and we're given back, we only get a handful. So I want to thank Councilwoman Carpenter for asking all the right questions because I think sometimes I can roll my dice. I bet you there's board members that don't know that answer. Uh, and neither does the public, right? Because, and I know who does, right? I know who our negotiation is. I know who's involved and who's not. Unfortunately, I can't put that out there, but, but it's a real thing. This is a thankless job. Uh, it is a thankless job and I got to tell you, I got real cheerful as we're going through the accomplishments because I actually uh get Kennedy and Erfon to constantly update us on the accomplishments because there's so many happening. And if I told you what's happened over the last eight years and over the last four years, and I, and before I lose this train of thought, I want to give you kudos, Lisa Coles, because you were here prior and you did with your board, make an attempt to go forward and we just had building blocks and we kept going with that momentum. So it doesn't, it didn't just happen over four years that I've been here, that some of us has been here five or others. It happened over a course of time and period. And those who think that it happens overnight, shame, right? Uh, I wish we could do it that fast. I will say this. Erfon, Erfon, you've done an amazing job. You answer every question that I ask. I bother you enough and I challenge you enough. Um, and you always have the right thing to say, doesn't he? He's always, and when he doesn't know, he goes back and, and it's sometimes I could get frustrated because I want to hear something else. And he tells you the why he's telling you this and then we find ways and we find very positive ways to move forward. Lizzie, every document, I mean, there wouldn't be of excellent financial reporting out of Erfon if Lizzie wasn't constantly texting us. And she doesn't text one person, she texts the entire finance committee, like who's coming to sign. And that's what I'm gonna leave with this. And that's what I'm going to leave with this, it is a true team effort because on that committee would be Chavez, and I know it just like this, Alvarez, B.C. And she texts us for, and there's never been a moment where somebody, if I say, hey, I'm in Chicago and B.C. is in Boston, Rob says, I'll stop in. Or if Rob is out in Atlantic City, Jose is somewhere else, B.C. stops in. And it happens within two hours, within two hours, she has who's coming. And sometimes I'm just flying down DeGraw Avenue, not speeding, just heading somewhere. And I remember she just sent the text and it's eight forty-five and I pull in. And she's like, I thought B.C. was coming. I said, I was just here, give me the documents, let's go over this. So, and isn't that so? I mean, it is truly a team effort um, on policy. We have Susan who's constantly on our education, Trina, and you guys are just on it. You're on it and, and it takes, it takes a group of people, right, to, to really make this work the way it's working. Uh, and Mr. Kennedy, I will say this, in all of your accomplishments that we've had, you know, yes, we're talking about fields. Yes, we're referring to the education of our kids. Yes, we're talking about, we have a great administrator, uh, finance, uh, clerical assistants, uh, superintendent, but, but prior to that, you got to motivate your staff. And because if teachers walk out on us, you have nothing, you have nothing, you have no boss for it, you have no board, it's just nothing. And we have been able, and I want to give a shout out to our finance and our negotiation teams who B.C. heads. Um, and I've been in those and I'd rather be quiet sometimes because I get a little flustered about where we need to be, how we need to save money, and B.C. jumps out of the Zoom meetings and says, but we got to calm down, we got to be in their shoes. When you bring your teachers up to par with programs and raises and your administrators and your staff and your secretaries, who are the, the, the bottom point, you know, they're the, they're the sole roots of the foundation, you know, you bring them up to par with other districts and it's harder for people to poach. And I'm sure they're going to try to poach our superintendent with all these beautiful accomplishments. I'm just happy he said that he wants to continue to see us grow. I like the word continue because that gives me some sort of hope that we're going to be, but you know, today in education, what I'm learning, coming from a business world, and it's happening in the business sector, people are just walking off of jobs with the hope, and then they go to the other side, they realize it's not as green as where they were. So what we're doing here is fertilizing our entire community, you know, fertilizing our schools so that people grow greener, they stick here, they stay here, and they're happy where they're at. And I only say this because parents have often come up to us, criticize what we're doing, criticize our administrators, and definitely always criticize our teachers. This is not an easy job anymore. I just had a, a conversation with some of my board members about uniform policies and trust codes methods and this, I'm more of a streamliner, so if you gave me one color, I'm happy. Just gray all the way and I'm happy. But our board members have difference of opinions and I respect that and they respect what I have to say. And we get to a common level playing field where everybody's happy. But often, we criticize the amount of work teachers have to do, and it's a lot, it's a lot, and how they stay after hours. Today, we had a, a, a great opportunity to open up, and I want to thank Councilwoman Carpenter for showing up. Um, we had an opportunity to open up, um, like a ribbon cutting for Trinity School where we installed a new playground. Um, and I know he said so many great things, I don't even know if you included in that, there were so many, right? But the truth is, we were able to attend, and, and there's a beautiful things when you see kids, and then you have someone like Kathleen Molina, one of our um, uh, staff administrators, right? Supervisor, early childhood supervisor, lovely person, and you know, she, she makes it a point to invite us and to, to motivate us. So when you're in the same motion, motivation transpires, the spark hits. I'm, I, I've been playing basketball with teachers lately and dodgeballs, and you can feel it because trust me, if they didn't like us, you could feel that too, right? And, and, and there, like I said, there's a lot of shemantism, he says, she said out there. But the truth is, we're flourishing, we're flourishing as a community, it's simply because there's no divide up here. There is no politicism up here, and there's none of that garbage that's happening in our country. Uh, we're focused on the fundamental principles of education, of people, of emotions, and how we need to nurture the future. We're working with, down the hill with our board, with our, our mayors and councils, we're working with them, we, they're working with us. I mean, just a few minutes ago, I was asked, did the agreement finally, everything we talked about, is it on paper and down the hill? That is the first time in my history in Bagota, as elected official on both sides, where I've had anyone with us a real good interest or heartfelt interest to say, let's get this done, let's get these fields done, let's move this motion, let's wow oil machine. And I, I wanted to close it up at this, you know, I do thank our teachers, I do thank our administrators. I, I thank the board, I really do thank you because you're phenomenal. For those who know who you are and who you were involved, which is ninety-five percent of you, I'm just saying, thank you, thank you, thank you, because sometimes I sit back and I say, could I have done this? Because I get really upset quickly when I don't think, see things working quick enough, right? So yeah, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm a thinker, I'm, let's go forward. Why are we talking about this? If it could be done, if we can afford it, and we're not going to go broke two years from now, it can be done, and it's an accomplishment. And the board, you're really, really good, I stayed true to that, you're focused, and I want to thank you, please don't deviate from that focus, I, I know the chatter, I hear it. I often, you know, I've learned almost like, it's almost be, it's better to be hid behind the curtains because people would just come at you, so I, I do want to thank you. Um, and, and I do, you know, Rob, I, I don't want to put you on blast, but Bagota was able to sell a house for nine hundred thousand dollars. People, some people criticized it, some people think they're very happy, but I want to put something in perspective. The American dream, as they call it, which is almost unattainable today, wherever it was standard, was you buy a home, you know, and you, that was sort of your investment. If you ask Bitcoin people, they tell you never buy a home. It's a money pit, and, and it sure is. But there's something that comes with the emotion and success to be able to raise children in a house in your own backyard and in a community environment, not a city environment. The parks, which we're obviously giving you now, the, you know, just all of this comes together. But no one ever takes in consideration that you've been paying tax for thirty years of your loan. And almost always at the age of, at thirty-fifth year, your kids are in college or adults, they're married, and you tend to want to now sell your home. And, and some people sell it before, but most people sell their home, and they go on to an apartment or senior citizen home. The truth of the matter is, all that money you invested, it wasn't just what you bought your house for, but everything you put back in the tax base, everything you put there, you then get to sell your house. So I put a story before this, a meeting opened, I purchased a house for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on Oakwood. Prior to that, the person that purchased it for four hundred and change, so they were, they had taken out two mortgages on it, so you could just imagine, right? I recall my neighbor buying a house for three hundred and eighty thousand, same house, and in two thousand eight, she was crying because I bought my house for a hundred and eighty, right? So, but she have sold her house, she would have gotten two hundred. The thing is that people lost money, and that was a sad moment because that was their American dream. Today, I understand the market is wild, I get it, it will settle, but if you're at any point able to sell your house for three times the value, you invested your money in the right place. So the argument is, Bagota has finally become the right place to the people who put in the work forty, fifty, sixty, thirty years ago. Let's not take that dream and hope away. Because if you're going to discredit, I understand there's fear of displacency, I under, I get it, I know it's hard. No one's here is building skyscrapers. That's not the goal in Bagota. The goal is to have the best school district we can put forward. I know the council's working the best roads, the best firehouses, the best services that you could possibly give residents. And by way of blue ribbons and all the services we give in a school district, we become that much more valuable. So I want to leave it, you know, those successes are amazing, um, and I owe it to everyone here, you've made my life abundantly easier to be able to make decisions and work, because you can imagine going to a place and no one supporting you. And I want to thank the parents and the community because I know you support us, I know you support me, I see it in your smiles, I see it in your hellos, I see it. And I, and this, and everyone gets that here, no one ever has, we can never say all those parents, we said, look, they have concerns and we tried to address them. So I want to thank the community as a whole, this is good news, this is how we gave back. A lot of people simply just don't give it back. We're sitting here saying, this year we could do it, let's do it, because we never know what the future looks like. And I just heard someone beside me say, wow, you're doing zero percent when towns are raising like crazy. This, uh, four years in a row, we have a zero percent tax increase. It means that we're doing the right thing, we're putting the money in the right places, and we're not being over gouging, we're not we're not looking to overspend, we're just putting the money where the kids deserve it. For four years in a row, that's, that's a testament to the previous, those who were here and Erfon and everyone else, so thank you for that. All right, I'm going to move on to, oh, no, we closed out, I did close it, then I went into, yep. Moving on to three one, uh, I'm sorry, five one, resolution, policy section.
Four one. Four three.
Four one. Oh, sorry, I circled this the wrong way. Four three, moving on to resolution approval of March twelve, twenty twenty-four, work action meeting minutes and March nineteen. Open regular meeting minutes, do I have a motion to approve?
Oliver.
Oliver, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Rocket, any board discussion? All in favor? Oh, no, Erfon?
Rock call. Yeah, Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes, on four one, I will abstain on four two as I was not here.
Thank you. Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
The same, um, yes, on four, uh, yes, on, um, on four one, I wasn't here for four two.
Thank you. Mr. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolution five one on the policy section, is there a motion to move five one?
Motion.
Mrs. Rocket, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chavez, any board discussion? Erfon?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution, uh, six twelve, education section of the agenda. Approval items of six one through six eleven, do I have a motion to move six twelve?
Motion Cruz.
Mrs. Cruz, do I have a second?
Chavez.
Chavez, any board discussion? Erfon?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to six thirteen, resolution of also in the education section, which is approval of the H.I.B. actions and decisions. Do I have a motion to move six thirteen?
Motion.
Mrs. Rocket, do I have a second?
Oliver.
Mrs. Oliver, any board discussion? Erfon?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
He said yes.
Yeah. Mrs. Oliver? Mrs. Rocket?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Does a mm count for that?
She was drinking.
Right, was you, so.
See, if it's not fun, it doesn't count. All right. People so serious in these board meetings, uh, moving, moving on to seven fourteen, resolution personnel section, I'm sorry. Uh, which is the approval of agenda items seven one through seven thirteen, do I have a motion to move seven fourteen?
Motion Cruz.
Mrs. Cruz for a motion, do I have a second?
Chavez.
Mr. Chavez, any board discussion? Erfon?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Hmm, I'm sorry, yes.
Motion carried.
Before you move forward, I want to um, personally say thank you to Mr. Inglis for all of his service and the progress achieved in, inside of Bigsby School. Um, he will be sorely missed.
Completely, yeah, absolutely. We almost wanted to say no.
Yeah, I just want to say no to that one.
Uh, he runs a tight ship, he runs a tight ship, it's, it's, it's sad, nevertheless, it's hard shoes to fill. Um, he, he runs a tight ship, uh, he has a beautiful school, it's nice and colorful, it's actually very warm, and not that any other school is not. But you know, it's small, it feels like a smaller school and, and it sure runs really nicely, so it's, it's good, it's a fun place to be in. Uh, moving on to eight, I'm sorry, seven fifteen, personnel section, which is the approval of the appointment of a custodian. Seven, do I have a motion to move seven fifteen?
Motion.
Thank you, Chavez, do I have a second? Alvarez. Mr. Alvarez, any board discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I was getting legal advice. Um, I saw the number is going to change.
Yeah.
All right. Eight seventeen, finance section, obviously, round of applause to you guys.
Motion.
Motion to move eight one through eight sixteen.
Motion.
Thank you, so motion Chavez to move eight seventeen, do I have a second?
Chavez.
Oliver, any board discussion? Roll call, Erfon?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We are pulling eight twenty-two, so eight twenty-three, eight, it would be eight twenty-two now. Which would be moving resolutions eight twenty-two, also in the finance section, hold on, which one did you pull? So it's eight twenty-one.
Right.
So it's eight, eight twenty-one.
No, you still can say eight twenty-three.
Okay, all right, so we'll do eight twenty-three.
Eighteen through twenty-one.
Okay, also finance section, which is approve agenda items eight twenty-one through eight, I'm sorry, eight eighteen through eight twenty-one.
And twenty-three and eight.
And eight twenty-three, so do I have a motion to move eight twenty-three?
Motion.
Chavez, do I have a second? Alvarez. Alvarez, any board discussion? Erfon?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving to nine three, buildings and ground, approval agenda items nine one through nine two, do I have a motion?
Oliver.
Motion Oliver to move nine three, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Rocket, any board discussion? Erfon?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
For the next one, Mr. Alvarez, recuse yourself. And it's on ten one, moving on the addendum section of the approval of detailed statement of contract cost admission, do I have a motion to approve ten one?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez?
Second.
Mrs. Rocket for a second, any board discussion? Roll call, Erfon?
So Mr. Alvarez?
I have a second. Recused. Recused.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes, for the record, Mr. Alvarez recused. Moving on to eleven one, committee reports, do we have any committee reports? I think we did that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did Kennedy do it for us? Thank you, Kennedy.
Can't follow that anymore.
Yeah, do I have a motion to move old business? New business? We have lots of new business, right? Uh, moving the floor to hearing of the public, do I have a motion to move to hearing of the public?
Oliver.
Oliver, Chavez for a second, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any member of the public? Please state your name.
Lisa Cole, um, while it's on my mind, the sign by the veins. Maybe we could start figuring out, you guys have a portion of that, and we do, right?
We'll, I only, we post something there, only if we post something there, we send it to
the clerk, right?
Clerk. So when we have big events, we send something there, but it's not something that, um, we post on often.
All right, I didn't know who, who had control of what, okay.
It's, it's, the borough has complete control of it, we have to send a request if we want something on there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm Connie Carpenter again, it's great meeting, and I hate to make this the end. But I was sort of called today that this is one of the trainers that this is Juanita Sayers, who sat where you sat for four terms, has passed.
Oh.
Juanita Sayers?
I did, I couldn't hear you. You cracked your voice.
I know, um, it's just very sad.